Call of March 22nd, 2021, City Council, many of the hold order, the clerk will call the roll.
Avrilov?
Present.
Brereton?
Here.
Flurry?
Present.
Frank?
Present.
Freeman?
Here.
McGee?
Here.
Porter?
Here.
Ratcliffe?
Here.
Snow?
Here.
Stevens?
Here.
Ten present.
We're all here, thank you ladies and gentlemen. Under public comment, we have no one registered this evening, nor do we have a public forum. Under reports of officers, boards, and special committees, under number one, public safety unfinished business, there is none to discuss this evening. Under public safety, new business, first up is the Police Department with an update. Chief Woody, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. If I could have Officer Kusparovic come up. I'm gonna take advantage of this opportunity. Officer Kusparovic has just recently successfully completed his probationary period with the Belvidere Police Department. Officer Kusparovic has come to us from Oak Park with a Bachelor of Arts from the U of I Chicago. He's fluent in English, Russian, and working knowledge of Spanish, right?
Si.
Si. Told you.
Asantemente.
Sworn in on September 12th, 2019, went to 14 weeks at Suburban Law Enforcement Academy, the College of the Page. Graduated from Celia, December 20th, 2019, went through four months of our field training program. Just completed his 18-month probationary period on March 12th, 2021. I have the honor of issuing Officer Kusparovic his permanent badge. Until now, he gets a recycled badge that somebody had previously worn that does not have his badge number on it. I will go ahead and issue him his permanent badge. His badge number is 416-416. So, Officer Kusparovic? I'm not opinionizing.
Okay.
Show us how it's done, chief.
You can have that. And there's your backup badge. So...
He does need a stinking badge, right?
He does need a stinking badge, you are correct, we all do. Please join me in congratulating Officer Kusparovic in successfully completing his probationary period. Now, yeah, as we do with all of the new recruits, I've asked him to say just a few words and he's so politely agreed. So, Officer Kusparovic?
Hey, so as Chief said, I came from Oak Park, so moving out here, it's been a real change of scenery. But I really like this community, I'm looking forward to the next 28 years and thanks to Mayor Mike and Chief Woody for signing off on me being here. Thanks to you guys for being here. Thank you.
Good job.
Yes.
Appreciate it.
So, can you continue on with the department update? Since the last time that I provided an update for the Police Department, the Police Department has conducted numerous entry-level interviews with new entry-level candidates and then met with the Fire and Police Commission and ultimately generated an initial entry-level police list. We have 18 candidates on that list for this particular time, according to Cops and Fire, which is our testing service. They say that's pretty much about the same as what other departments are seeing as far as applicants testing. We are finished the promotional candidate testing process. We're in the process of doing a final eligibility list. We have the initial list that is out. Candidates will be given 10 days to get their preference points in, and we currently have 14 officers on that list. That is a list for officers who want to become sergeants. In the entry-level candidate list, from the previous list, we still have Sunset Winsler, who's been offered by the Fire and Police Commission a conditional offer of employment. So, right now, we're just waiting on a academy to open up and we'll send her to the academy and she will replace Sergeant Staples. And then, we had just finished taking lateral candidate applications and will be conducting interviews tomorrow on lateral candidates. That'll be it for the update for the Police Department. If nobody has any questions, I will turn it back over to Mayor Chamberlain.
Okay, next up, we have the annual report, our crime stats, and I'll turn it right back over to you, chief.
I think you might do letters of recognition?
I can, yes.
Did you want to do those now or after we do the crime thing?
No, we can do letters.
Okay, go ahead with the letters.
I have two letters of recognitions. You have the letters themselves in your packets. But what I'm going to go ahead and do, since you have the letters for your reference, I'd like to read the actual correspondence that we got from the citizens, either in our community or other jurisdictions, that prompted those letters of recognition. The first one will be for Officer Danielak. This letter came from Mr. Tom Morgan. It states, "It's addressed to me. Dear Chief Woody, I have to tell you about an incredible police officer who responded to my call for help early on Saturday, February 20th. Here's what I was going through. On Friday evening, it became necessary to call an ambulance for my wife. I don't like to drive at night anymore except in an emergency. I followed the ambulance to Swedish-American Hospital, sat with her as they hooked her up to the machines, and when about 2:00 a.m., I left the hospital headed for home. I have lived there for over 50 years and I became disoriented. I went to pull into the driveway to turn around, and it was not a driveway and I got stuck in the deep snow. I felt hopeless. I had no sleep. I feared of losing my wife of 57 years, and now I'm stuck in the snowbank. I called 911, explained my situation to the dispatcher. Officer Joseph Danielak showed up. I thought he would assume at this time on Saturday morning that I may be drunk. I am an alcoholic, but I have been clean and sober and AA for the last 46 years. I could not believe the kindness that he showed me. He gave me hope. He called me a wrecker and waited there until the tow truck arrived. The driver got me out of the snow and Officer Danielak spoke with the driver, then came to my car and asked if I knew how to get home. I admitted I was very confused and he said, "Follow me, I'll get you home." I said, "Wait, I have to pay for the tow truck driver." He said, "It's all been taken care of." I followed him home and when with relief I saw my driveway, I stopped to thank him for his incredible kindness. I asked him about the bill for towing. He said he explained what I had been through that night to the tow truck driver and the driver said, "No charge." My wife had emergency surgery on Saturday morning and is in critical condition on a ventilator under sedation. She's still alive as of this morning, Sunday, the 21st. I hope that she will make it. Please express my thanks to Officer Joe Danielak for his help and kindness. Chief Woody, if all of your officers are like Joe, you have one hell of a great department." So, I thought that was deserving of a letter of recognition. That will be placed in his file as well as given to him and his supervisor. I have one more. This one is for Officer Brox, if you refer to the letter in your packets. I will read the correspondence from a Rockford sergeant who sent this to Deputy Chief Gardner. "I wanted to pass on our appreciation for Officer Brox's effort while investigating a domestic incident involving a Belvidere resident, which occurred in the city of Rockford. Officer Brox was able to obtain a statement and photographs from the victim and forwarded the case file to my office. The victim refuses to cooperate with Rockford Police detectives. However, as a result of Officer Brox's investigation, detectives were able to obtain a no-bond warrant for the suspect's arrest. This case was solely charged due to Officer Brox taking the time to complete a full investigation. Even though it occurred in a neighboring jurisdiction, Officer Brox's dedication should be commended." So, I'd like to just point out what a fantastic job those officers did and this is just another example of the great work that your Belvidere Police officers do every day.
Here, here.
Annual report?
Annual report.
Perfect. Okay, if I could have everybody turn to the annual report that I had submitted probably a month or so ago in your packets. Otherwise, I think we also sent another copy digitally last Thursday or Friday. I am, in previous years, we've gone through the entire report, which consists of all the departments. Today, I am going to take it on faith that you've all had the opportunity to go through that and ask if there's any questions about anything that you may have seen and restrict what we talk about tonight specifically to the crime statistics. Are there any questions about anything that's been in the report that you've been given? Alderman Snow?
And I may have asked this before, but when you have the missing persons issue?
Yes, sir.
At this point, all of them have been solved or resolved as far as nobody's outstandingly missing?
Correct. Yes, Sergeant Smaha is in charge following up with anybody that continues to be a missing. There are numerous times where parents or the people that report these individuals as missing forget to call us back to let us know that they've been returned because there are protocols on what the Police Department has to do if the person is missing for a longer duration. We have to enter dental records into the lead system, so on and so forth, so we make sure to follow up on all of this. If there's no other questions, I'd like to point out that the annual report is on the Facebook page of the Belvidere Police Department as well as on the city's website for not only your review and reference, but anybody else in the community that may be listening.
I have a question.
Yes, Alderman Freeman?
Thank you, chief. So, I think you printed this out and gave this to us before Governor Pritzker signed that police reform bill. So, I was just wondering on the state mandated police training requirement, if those that we have have changed, if they've added to them, or if they're gonna be more often? Or what's going on with that?
Yeah, we would anticipate there is going to be more mandatory training that is required from the state. Over the last few years, we've seen additional mandatory, unfunded mandatory training that's been required, that the Police Department has been responsible for doing. The Illinois Training and Standards Board is responsible for making sure that all of the departments are up to date on their mandatory training. There are trailer bills that are forthcoming for that law or legislation. I would not anticipate that they will probably change much as far as the training is concerned. So, we would anticipate that there is going to be some additional training in the near future. What they've done in the past is they've given us, you know, a year, two years, three years to complete the training and come into compliance.
Okay, 'cause I thought that bill was gonna be going into effect in July, so I didn't know how much more training they had put on there as mandatory for you guys.
Yeah, I don't have it in front of me to give you exact a number of hours. That's something that I'd be happy to research for you and get you that information.
Thank you.
Yep. If I could have you turn to page 52 of the annual report, please? This is just kinda like a definitions portion. It says UCR Offense Classifications, Part One. The federal government classifies different types of crimes in different parts. Part One, as you see, are the probably most significant or serious crimes. And I'll be referring to the different parts later, that's why I wanted to point you to this page. So, if you have any questions as to what I'm referring to, you can go back and see what I'm talking about or what it's referencing. And then, page 53 is Part Two, which you're dealing with your batteries, assaults, thefts, disorderly conducts, DUIs. Part Three are typically your non-criminal types of classifications. And then, moving right into the crime stats, are there any questions at this point? Okay, so, crime statistics for 2020. We'll start with homicides. Homicides, we're zero. Homicides and kidnapping, we're both zero for 2020. Sex offenses, the Police Department is looking at a 24% increase over 2019. When I look at our calls for service, it's a wide variety of different offenses. There's no real theme as far as what we're looking at in terms of why any particular sex offense is being committed. Really, the only link that I found is that a majority of the offenses, the offender is known to the victim. So, that's at this point not something that's uncommon. Having investigated sex crimes for a number of years in general case, that tends to be the type of offender that we come in contact with most often. The stranger danger type of offenders are rare for us, which is awesome. Moving forward to robbery, the Police Department saw a 20% decrease in robberies from 2020, 2019. And over a five-year average, we're looking at a 95% decrease in robberies in the five-year average. 2017, as you can see, is kind of an anomaly that skews the numbers a little bit, the statistics. We look at the two to five would be typical for our community. Robberies, we saw, for 2020, it was the individuals going into the gas stations and implying that they had a weapon and demanding either cigarettes or other merchandise. It seemed to be what kinda drove our robbery stats up this year. That would be your aggravated robberies where a weapon is implied, not necessarily shown. If there's no questions, I'll continue on. Assault and battery, Police Department saw a 20% decrease from 2020, 2019, with a 23% decrease over your five-year average. Domestic batteries, to be perfectly honest with you, I'm kinda surprised 'cause I did a query probably about quarterly after we got rolling into COVID just to see with everybody being cooped up at home, you could anticipate that people are gonna be potentially getting into more types of fights, domestic-related situations. And our domestic batteries actually were double at that particular point in time. But over the remainder of the year, it seemed like, obviously, that number had really dissipated 'cause we're looking at roughly a 20% decrease from 2019 to 2020.
Do we need to advance the frame?
Do we? I'm sorry.
There we go.
Sorry about that.
Thank you.
If there's no questions on that, move on to arson, which 2019, we had one. This year, we didn't have any. Five-year average, we're looking at 1.2, so roughly, obviously, 100% decrease. Burglaries breaking and entering, we're at a 39% decrease this year with a 79% decrease over our five-year average with residential burglaries driving that decrease. One would speculate with COVID, everybody being at home, obviously, breaking into someone's house is going to be much, much more difficult when everybody's going to be at home. So, we would anticipate that's probably what's driving that number down. So, we'll see how that fluctuates next year.
Do you have a lot of people that report that their packages have been stolen off the porch?
I don't know what you consider a lot. It does happen. It's nothing that we've saw, we've seen a pattern on as of recently. But a lot of times, if we can put a pattern together, then yeah, we'll conduct surveillance and try and catch those who are doing that. Alderman Snow?
Maybe this isn't applied to this one, but burglary from a motor vehicle. Do the car alarms really work to deter people? Because most people seem to ignore those when the alarm's going off. If anybody actually looks at the vehicle that's going off, or is it kind of a moot point?
No, I absolutely think they work. You probably are right. They do become mundane and I don't know if they get as much attention from the general public as, you know, a victim would care to have. But typically, the burglaries, the motor vehicles that we see are crimes of opportunity. And if the vehicle's locked, if they don't see any valuables inside the vehicle, or if it's alarmed, generally speaking, they're gonna move on to something that's an easier target.
First, it's the alarm, then it's every dog in the neighborhood, so then everybody's up and so the combination works.
Yeah, we, you know, typically, the burglars that we end up catching is because either a neighbor hears them make noise or there is something that draws, you know, one of the neighbor's attention to what these people are doing. Cameras have been very helpful as well. And then, you know, those citizens will contact the Police Department and we'll flood the area. We've been very successful that way. Any other questions on burglaries? Theft offenses, Police Department's seen a 21% decrease with a 47% decrease over the five-year average. With, you're looking at probably theft offenses and retail thefts driving that decrease. Motor vehicle thefts, one category in which the Police Department's seen an increase of 65% from 17 in 2019 to 28 in 2020 and a 65% increase over the five-year average. We're, well, when I've talked to the general case detectives about what types of motor vehicle thefts we're seeing, it seems to be that of the burglars that we've caught who are connected with stolen vehicles, they'll bring a stolen vehicle from another community to our community to conduct car burglaries or other types of thefts and then look for a vehicle in our community to steal and then take to another community to continue that same pattern of criminal behavior. So, that seems to be what's driven up our stolen vehicles this year. We unfortunately are seeing a lot of people that, you know, it's a double-edged sword. Feel comfortable enough in our community to leave their cars unlocked, but also the key fobs in them, which just make them prime targets for these burglars. So, we've put LPSA's and information on Facebook trying to discourage, you know, our residents from doing those types of things and pretty much just try and make themselves harder targets. But that seems to be what is driving that increase. And that brings us to the end of the Part One offenses. And overall, our Part One offenses have seen a 22% decrease from 2019 to 2020. Yes?
When it comes to the car thefts, are most of them recovered? Or a lot of them go unsolved as far as recovering the vehicles?
No, most of them do end up getting recovered in other jurisdictions. There are rare occasions where we will recover our own in our community. But for the most part, they get driven to neighboring jurisdictions or somewhere in the county. We've had them out in the collar counties as well, so they'll take them out there and the law enforcement agencies out there will report having car burglaries in those areas where they find our stolen vehicles with reports of vehicles stolen from their jurisdictions. So, it just seems to be a pattern of behavior that is becoming more and more common. Page 57, fraud offenses at the top. We, the Police Department saw a 2% increase from 2019 to 2020. Primarily, we saw a lot of IDES, Illinois Department of Employment Security fraudulent claims. People get noticed that others have filed for unemployment in their name. We had, it just seemed like just nonstop reports, which that's going to drive us, drive those numbers up a little bit. Overall, Police Department saw a 10% decrease over your five-year average in fraud offenses.
Question, so how many of them get solved?
The employment ones?
Or any of these?
The solvability rate is probably not very high. The, it just depends what type of fraud you're looking at. Some are easier to investigate than others. Credit card fraud tend to, well, leave more investigative clues than your IDES. Counterfeit or forgery, it's about 50/50 if you're looking at forged bills. Unless the federal government can put together a pattern of serial numbers and track it back to suspects that they already have identified, we have seen that. Otherwise, those can be difficult to, you know, to solve. We've seen counterfeit checks where people will actually write forged checks in their name, a little bit easier to solve. So, it just kinda depends on the case. Moving on, destruction, damage, vandalism of property. Police Department saw an 18% decrease from 2019, 2020, and then a 38% decrease over the five-year average. Narcotics offenses, Police Department saw a 62% decrease and roughly a 325% decrease over the five-year average. And that's not necessarily a statistic reflective of enforcement. A lot of that had to do with the law changes and the civil ordinance tickets that we used to cite people for were no longer against the law, so we no longer cited people for that. But then they changed the law and made it illegal for people to be driving in the vehicle with cannabis that's not in the prescribed content. vehicle with cannabis that's not in the prescribed container. So, there was a little bit of change as far as the law is concerned, and you'll notice, you know, cannabis possession, ten grams, the very first line, civil ordinance, two thousand and nineteen, there was ninety-seven, eighteen, two thirty-two, seventeen, two twelve, and then last year, fourteen. So, that's the reflection in the change in the law, as well as the very last line, which is also civil ordinance, which you'll notice the discrepancy in the statistics with those. So, any questions about that?
Yeah, I had a question for you.
Yes, ma'am.
So, the possession of cannabis in the passenger and driver modes, if you have it in the car, it has to be in a medical marijuana prescription container?
Yeah, sealed, sealed container.
Okay.
Sealed container.
Oh, just a sealed container?
Can't be accessible.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Okay. Moving on to weapon law violations, police department saw a two hundred and twenty percent increase from nineteen to twenty as well, but ultimately, over the five years, we saw a twenty-five percent decrease. Looking at the statistics and the calls for service, generally, our weapon violations came from traffic stop by enforcement, where we covered firearms from two-thirds of those calls. The others were ultimately somebody in possession of ammunition, somebody that had brass knuckles, those are also UUW, which is that first line, and then associated with a lot of those charges is somebody that won't have a Foid, that is in possession of that firearm, which you'll see at the very last, but also, we had, at the beginning of the year, towards the beginning of the year, we had some gang activity in the area of Artless Park that we ended up having to address, and were able to curb, but not before we had probably two or three shootings that occurred in that location. Yes, Alderman, Snow?
Question with regards to the Foid cart. I know they, because the state police are so far behind, they've extended the expiration dates on some of them, did they not, or you?
Do you know that?
The state is way behind on the Foid renewals and new applications. The governor, as part of his executive orders, had put in place a temporary restriction on them expiring, and more specifically, CCL's not expiring. I don't know where that, with it now, as he's rolled back some of the executive orders. There was an interesting article today about the Foid system being so backlogged, and even the ISP director said it was unacceptable.
Thank you. If there's no other questions on that page, if I could have you turn to page fifty-eight. Curfew, we're looking at about a two-hundred percent increase from nineteen to twenty with a forty percent decrease over the five-year average. It's just more people stuck at home and leaving their home without permission, so we get those calls and handle those calls for service. But even though it does sound like a significant statistical percentage increase, you're talking from two to six, from one year to the next. Disorderly conduct, we're looking at a sixty-five percent decrease from nineteen to twenty with a seventy-five percent decrease over the five-year average. Contribute that to kids not necessarily being in school. Two thousand and nineteen, we saw a great deal of disorderly conduct being reported from the schools, where somebody will make either a valid or innocuous threat about a school shooter, will take that report, investigate it. Some juveniles wound up being held accountable, others, depending on the circumstances, may not, but that was a significant increase for us over the previous years. DUI, we're looking at a fifty-two percent decrease. I mean, it's, you know, not rocket science, bars are closed, so we're just not seeing people driving from one bar to the next, so. And prior to that, you'll still see a steady decline from year to year over the last five years, you know, contribute that to education awareness, more availability of taxis, Uber, those ride-sharing types of companies that make it easier for people who have been drinking to make a good decision and not drive while intoxicated. Liquor law, primarily, you know, your minor possession, consumption, or transportation in vehicles, we're looking at a thirty-five percent decrease with a ninety-five percent decrease over the five years. Missing persons were up roughly ten percent with missing persons being down, or, I'm sorry, up roughly thirty percent over a five-year average. Any questions on, on any of that? And then you have trespass real property, state-supported property, vehicle, residence. The police department's looking at a thirty-six percent decrease from one year to the next with a sixty-four percent decrease over the five-year average. Part Two offenses are looking at, in total, a fifty-three percent decrease from two thousand and nineteen to two thousand and twenty. Any questions on page fifty-eight? Okay, moving to page fifty-nine. Death investigations from nineteen to twenty, police department's looking at a thirty-one percent increase in death investigations. They all reported to be natural deaths, and my understanding is clarification would have to be sought with the health department, or not the health department, but coroner's office as to whether or not those were COVID-related, and maybe even the health department, but I couldn't say whether or not they actually tested those at this particular point in time, so. Suicide threats were up thirty-seven percent from nineteen to twenty. Suicides were up fifty percent from two to, or from two to three in nineteen to twenty. Attempted suicides were actually down, and then our overdoses overall were down seventeen percent from thirty-six to thirty. And then finally, for that page, our narc, we had twelve Narcan deployments and eleven saves, which ultimately resulted in one overdose death at the top of the page there. Any questions on page fifty-nine?
Yeah, I'm confused.
Yes, ma'am.
So, at the top, under death investigations, there's overdose deaths of one, but then you have a whole category of overdose deaths.
No, those are just overdoses. So, somebody could overdose that we would respond to, and because of Narcan, we've been really successful in preventing people from actually dying from overdoses, but unfortunately, there was one that resulted in a death.
Oh, okay, so those, these are just not deaths, okay, gotcha.
Yeah, the thirty that I think you're referring to, those were just calls for service that the police department handled, that were overdoses.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for page fifty-nine? And that would bring me to the end of the crime statistics. Any questions about any of the information I presented?
Alderman Porter, go ahead.
Well, I'm just curious, I see that hate crimes are zero, so that's a good thing. I'm just wondering if there's any, if you have any feeling or if there's any complaints of this new unfortunate trend of harassing Asian-American people, if we've had any problem, or if any of the local cities have had any problem with that?
I can't speak to any local cities, but we haven't had any reports where people are selectively targeting Asian-Americans, and, you know, any, yeah, we just haven't had any of those types of reports that we've taken. Any other questions? Well, I appreciate you giving me the opportunity to go over this with you. If you think of something in reviewing the information that I presented to you, please, don't hesitate to get ahold of me, I'm available twenty-four seven, either by email, and I think everybody has my cellphone if, if that's easier for you as well, but I really look forward to the conversations that I have and answering any questions that you have. Thank you very much for your time.
Thanks, Chief, and you still have the floor?
I do.
We have the opportunity to make a motion to accept a donation.
Okay. So, if you can turn to the motion in your packet regarding the motion to accept a donation, please be advised that the Belvidere Police Department received a donation from Paul and Dorothy Hale in the amount of one hundred dollars. After a snowfall, three officers assisted them with shoveling some snow. They wanted to pay the officers for their help, which the officers, of course, refused to accept. The following week, the Belvidere Police Department received a check for a hundred dollars in the mail. I would request a motion to accept a donation of a hundred dollars from Paul and Dorothy Hale for a purchase to be determined at a later date.
I have a motion, motion by Frank, second by Flurry. Questions or comments concerning the motion on the floor? Hearing none, all those in favor, will, when your name is called, signify by saying hi, those opposed, nay.
Al Rivelo?
Aye.
Burton?
Aye.
Flurry?
Aye.
Frank?
Aye.
Freeman?
Aye.
McGee?
Aye.
Porter?
Aye.
Brackless?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
Ted in favor?
Motion's proven unanimously, thank you very much. Next up, Alderman Stevens had wanted to discuss the speed limits on Appleton Road. Did you want to preface with some remarks and?
Oh, yes. One thing, the speed limit there is forty, not forty-five. I typed this up before I went out and checked it. I've had residents call me about them having problems, you know, getting across the street to their mailboxes, that a lot of times, it seems to be a good portion during Chrysler Mr. Dolman's here, did you want to make any kind of comment, Jim?
I'd like to say you want to turn in your driveway and you have to worry about somebody hitting you in the butt, that's how fast you're going. And when they put this speed thing up, you can tell the difference in the cars going by, the one that, the speed thing that's not on the other side of the road, that's getting traffic going to the south, they're just flying. I mean, at night, you hear a car go by, and you look out the window, you don't even see it because it's already down on the railroad tracks. I think something needs to be done with that. Slowed down to thirty miles an hour, then maybe they'll do forty miles an hour, which is better than doing fifty and sixty. And the school bus picks up my grandson and almost got hit in the rear end, and the guy's working on the road, putting, filling the potholes, the guy just jumped into the passenger side, and if it wasn't for the driver stepping on the gas pedal, they'd have got rear-ended. Need to get something done about that. It's ridiculous. My mailbox has been wiped out three times because the speed limit is too fast there.
So, a couple of things we can do. Do we have two-speed trailers that we could deploy for a short period of time while we figure out how to solve this for the longer haul?
We do not. We have one speed trailer, the county has one. If they're not using it, I'm sure they'd be more unhappy to let us use that.
Brent, is there anything such as, you know, speed bumps are usually designed for traffic going, you know, fifteen, ten, fifteen miles an hour. Is there any other kind of a deployment from a physical point of view that Public Works could do to slow people down if we lowered the speed limit out there to thirty-five? And it's thirty, you know, I, I understand exactly what you're saying.
I'd say take it down to thirty miles an hour. There's no reason that it's from Sixth Street to the railroad tracks, if they need to be doing forty miles an hour there. I mean, even the grainery next door, they get the semis, they want to get out under the road so they can haul the grain away, and then can't even get out.
I agree with you. Everybody's driving about twenty miles an hour of the speed limit, and it's just, it's very dangerous. Brent, you?
Well, there's nothing physically that you would want to do as far as speed bumps or speed ramps, speed humps on a collector's street such as Appleton. Basically, you can do a, you can conduct a speed study north of, north of the Newburgh-Locus intersection, Appleton's thirty-five miles an hour, south, it's forty, as stated. You can do a conduct speed study, determine the eighty-fifth percentile of speed. You do that so that, you try to do that during normal working hours, typical conditions, not on Fridays, not on Mondays, usually Tuesdays through Thursdays, to establish the eighty-fifth percentile of speed. You try to do that when the motorists are not aware that that's being done, so you can get a feel for what the typical motors feel safe driving, speed driving at. And once you determine that, then there's other factors that go into the speed study, the number of driveway openings and so forth to arrive at the speed. So, my guess would be that, once you can, once you complete that work, that you would arrive at probably a thirty or thirty-five mile an hour applicable speed limit for that section.
But it's necessary for us to do that to satisfy the state, or can, is that our own jurisdiction that we can unilaterally make that decision?
Well, you would probably want to have the speed study to back you up for court cases for enforcement purposes. City attorney?
We've already lost one case where, because there hadn't been what we call the warrants, the speed study done, to back up the change in speed on Newburgh Road back in the day, that case ended up getting dismissed, and you recall, we then went back into the speed study to justify those speeds on that road, so, no, I would not recommend changing the speed limits without conducting the study. Chief may want to talk about enforcement issues and things like that.
Yeah. When, it was brought to my attention that this was going to be on the agenda, and what some of the requested remedies were, I went ahead and the command staff deployed our patrol division to do traffic enforcement details over there for a period of time, so you should see that in addition to the, to the speed trailer, but other than that, you know, Appleton, Appleton-
I suggest if you guys are going to sit there, park your car back along the grain shed, so you can catch them either, because if you're sitting on the side of the road that they're heading south on, they're going to see you sitting there. If you're sitting over by the grainery, backed up a little bit behind the shed, they're not going to see it, and they're going to be flying by, and you're going to have more chances of catching them.
Yeah, it, they do have, well, some of them have dual radar, so they can get traffic going both directions, but in addition to the speed details, the traffic enforcement details, you know, any of the officers know that that is a area of roadway that is traveled at higher rates of speed than what's posted, and we do have moving radar, and a lot of times, and I know when I was on the road as both patrol officer and a sergeant, you know, anytime you're, you're going north or south, you're running radar. So, it's, it's not going to be a perfect solution, sir. You know, we can continue to be consistent with it, be happy to work with you, you know, any suggestions that you may have, being in that area, you know, you know, all the time, and see if we can't impede the speed, but I doubt if we're going to be able to stop it altogether.
One more thing you could do is put a stop sign at Sixth Street, so the people heading, heading south have to stop for people off of Sixth Street to get on, and a stop sign from the other way, so people off Sixth Street could head north, that would slow the traffic down too, because they're not, that railroad track stomping on it when they know they got to stop, and the same thing coming from Route Twenty.
Sure.
That would slow the traffic down too.
Unfortunately, using stop signs as a, as a speed control device is, is not the proper use of a stop sign. There's warrants for stop signs as well, that would have to be met for a multiway stop condition. We can review that as well as conduct a speed study on Appleton and bring those findings back to the council for further action. But we could probably do that, we've got an extra week with a fifth Monday, we could probably have that information back hopefully by the, well, if not the April Public Works meeting, at least by the main Public Works meeting, we could have that compiled.
How is a speed study done?
Well, there's, there's different components, not that physically, but the actual, to trace the speeds, you have to determine the 85th percentile. So we'll have an unmarked car, unmarked vehicle out there that's actually taking notes, just recording the speeds for all the vehicles passing both the northbound and southbound, and you compile that average to come up with that 85th percentile speed.
Dolman Snow?
Well, I'm not a big fan of them in general, but it looks like that area might be wide enough to have a small roundabout. That would in turn force people to slow down, just throwing that out there as a something.
Well, again, roundabout, you're looking at the intersection and the warrants to make that happen, so that would have to be something that would be reviewed as well.
I have a comment.
Go ahead.
So, maybe it's just me, but I feel like, once we turn Appleton into the four lane that we're looking to do, that that situation is probably only going to get worse. People are going to feel like they're on a highway.
Well, I think we had the, you know, we widened Appleton on the, on the north of the intersection at Newburgh there, we did that section several years ago, to a four lane, and again, that's posted at 35 miles an hour, and I don't think that's, I think the effectiveness of that speed limit in that, in that relationship is fairly consistent, and I think going to a four lane down on the south side is probably going to be, will end up hopefully with the same results as we had on the north section.
Well, we have, you've just heard what we have in our tool belt, and we can employ everything that we have in our tool belt starting now, and collect the data and collect the results of writing a lot of tickets out there and see if it helps. What happens there is just, it's just like, we were, we got added in and out from I-DOT on 20 by agreeing to lower the speed limit there to 55, as it is now. And people drive 70, 80 miles an hour headed toward Rockford on 20. So it's just, everybody drives these, drives way faster than speed limit, but we'll address this with the, with the things that we can do, and see if we can put on a thinking cap and come up with something that might be a little bit more long-term. But especially, I see the buses stop along there, you know, to get the kids, and the other thing is people having to go across the street and get their mail and from some of the mailboxes out there, and we had a discussion about that before, that's something that we have to talk to the post office about, but I, I think that, I appreciate you coming tonight, and I would agree with you that people drive crazy out there. I've had occasion to stop out there a few times later lately, and it can be a little dangerous. Yes, sir?
So with the speed trailer going on the southbound, and if we change it after a week or two to the northbound, you'll be able to come up with some information on times and generally dates when the speed could be worse than others then?
Yeah, and that's typically how we use the information that the speed trailer obtains, but in the meantime, we've went ahead and put it out to our different patrol shifts to start doing details, you know, and try and deter some of the speeders and catch some of them that are coming from either the north or the south.
And when we're doing, conducting the, the speed study for the 85th percentile, the trailer will not be out there.
So if you notice that we're doing some good, would you let us know, sir?
Yes.
Thank you. And thanks again for coming tonight, it's helpful to hear it from somebody who lives there.
I just want something done about it, I mean, it's just getting, we moved there 21 years ago, and it just seems like it's getting worse and worse and worse.
I agree. We'll do, we'll do what we can do with what we've got going, and we'll try to think if there's some other ways that we can effect a change.
I stood out there and watched that speed thing in my yard for three minutes, and that thing blinked five times in the red in three minutes. So that tells you there's a lot of speeders out there.
Next up on tonight's agenda is the fire department update. Chief Heiser, you have the floor?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mayor. First of all, I'm going to go, on my report, I'm going to go over a few fire incidents that just recently occurred. On Tuesday, March 9th, at 6:11 a.m., the Belvidere Fire Department was dispatched to a reported garage fire in a 700 block of Eastwood Lane. Upon arrival, the BFD found the unattached garage was fully involved. For those who might not understand "fully involved," that's from floor to ceiling in The fire was impending on a house less than 10 feet away. Firefighters from Boone County Districts 1, 2, and 3 worked with the Belvidere Fire Department to extinguish this blaze. Officer responding to this incident was Boone County, Boone County's EMA air truck, Cherry Valley Fire, and Marengo Fire Department, where they come with an engine for a change of quarters. I want to say a little, a little something about this early morning incident. As far as like the dedication, I also, I want to throw this out there, dedication and sacrifice from our local county volunteers. Most of those, most of those individuals were probably getting ready to go to work that morning at 6:11, 6:11 in the morning, but they were able to shift gears and they respond to a fellow agency's call for assistance. So I just want to put that out there. We appreciate their efforts. Volunteers in our, in our area are outstanding, and we love to see them at our calls. There were no injuries to either residents or firefighters. The cause of the fire was determined to be accidental. The garage will be a total loss, but the house suffered only minor exterior damage to the siding. Damage was estimated at $40,000 to a property and contents valued at $135,000. On Thursday, March 18th, 2021, at 4:21 p.m., Belvidere Fire Department responded to a mutual aid call in the 300 block of Ogden Street in Capron for a three-flat apartment structure fire. Belvidere assisted with the chief and a three-man engine. No injuries were reported from civilians or firefighters, but unfortunately, a pet dog died from smoke inhalation. On Saturday, March 20th, 2021, at 7:55 a.m., our department responded to the 1700 block of 14th Avenue. On arrival, smoke and flames were showing from the exterior around the fireplace chase. All occupants safely evacuated the house. Firefighters quickly went to work extinguishing the fire, which had worked its way into the attic. Boone County 2 assisted with salvage and overhaul, and Marengo Fire Department again provided change of quarters. No injuries were reported by occupants or firefighters. A faulty fireplace was to blame for this incident, which caused $40,000 damage to the structure and the contents at this house, which is valued at $190,000. The Red Cross was notified and is assisting the family with immediate needs.
What are, what is the change of quarters?
Thank you for that question. Change of quarters. Marengo Fire Department will come over to Belvidere, and they'll sit in our firehouse while we're responding to the needs of the city. So, they'll stay there until we release them, and also, we, we reciprocate that. We also do things like that for other agencies, so. It's a way of sharing all our resources. Then I'm going to move on to, any other questions pertaining to the structure fires that we had recently? Okay. I'm going to move on to promotions. The department is presently undergoing the promotional process for their next captains and lieutenants. Every three years, fire departments are mandated to create new lists for their members to be promoted, to be promoted from. Our present list expires April 15th, 2021. We're presently going through the assessment center. We, we had some, three individuals today who were wanting to be captains, and then tomorrow, we have eight firefighters who want to move to lieutenant position. Any questions for promotions? Moving on, retirements. The department will be celebrating three retirements on May 6th, 2021. Those three are Captain Mark Zambrega with 27 years, firefighter Josh Oats with 20 years, and firefighter Chuck Rotolo, also with 20 years. I will, I will remind everyone again in my April report, in case you would like to come to their open house and wish them well. Moving to station number one remodel, I'm pleased to say that our station number one remodel is complete, and we are presently moving our file cabinets, our desk, and other items back into the newly remodeled areas. You could check out the remodel when you come to see our three retirees off in early May. And then I'm going to move on to tornado preparedness. Each spring, this community is reminded of the devastating power of tornadoes. April 21, 1967 serves as our annual reminder, when 24 of our Belvidere and Boone County residents lost their lives. Today, our most vulnerable reside in our three manufactured home parks, Four Seasons, Greenview Estates, and Bellbow. This month, your Belvidere Fire Department, in cooperation with the property manager of these parks, will be sharing tornado preparedness information. I have here the sheet that we're going to have inserted into all the newsletters for all 970 manufactured homes here in Belvidere. We're always consistently, we're trying to find areas for these folks to take refuge in, in the event of a tornado. And we're, we're coming up with different areas that, that work, sometimes not enough room is available, so that's a process that will continue to go until, till we find enough, you know, space for these folks to go, so. It's a problem right now. You're not, in a manufactured home, it's recommended to not be in there during a case of a tornado. All right? It's just, it's not, it's not good to be in it. It's better, the Red Cross says, better be in your car, seatbelted, so. We're going to keep working with these people. This informational tornado safety checklist is titled Be Red Cross Ready, and it provides valuable preemption ideas and explains what actions to take in the event of a tornado, and the actions to take after a tornado. These will be included in the monthly newsletter to all of the 970 homes in Belvidere. 587 which reside in Four Seasons, 355 in Greenview, and then we also have 28 in Bellbow. The Bellbow ones, me and firefighter Adrian Trujillo, who is fluent in Spanish, are going to walk those and personally talk to the individuals who live there. Does anyone have any questions over the information I just shared with you? Yes, sir?
So when it comes to the tornado and, and trying to find shelter for them, what kind of distance are you actually looking to limit it to?
So some, some of the, some of the spaces that we have talked about is the community building, trying to get there, people who would be coming down Newburgh Road, that would be easier for them to gain access to that. Out at Four Seasons, we're looking at the Oasis, and the basements that they have, they have some area they, you know, could provide there. Also at Four Seasons, they have a shelter that was in place a long time ago when the first, when the park first opened. It's way too small today. And also, ADA, it's not ADA compliant as well, so. But we're, we're continuing to look at different areas that we can go to. Any other questions?
Questions for the chief? Okay.
Okay. Mayor and council, thank you guys for letting me do this presentation. Thanks for the opportunity.
Thank you, Chief. Under number three, finance and personnel and finished business, there is none to discuss tonight. Under finance and personnel, new business, first we have a budget and finance update, and if I can take a minute, you all have in your packet, and I think we emailed out in the middle of the week last week, that... Yes? Can everybody hear me now? There was a email sent out, and there is a letter in your packet, that we are losing Becky Tobin as our finance director. And this is a tremendous loss for the city. The ability to keep the city on the kind of a budget that we've been on for the last seven years has not been easy. There have been many, many challenges, and Becky has done the work with a one-person department in a city that probably should have three people in the, in the finance department. We've managed from time to time to attract really good summer interns that have come back a couple of times for us, but, you know, I just want to say personally, the gratitude I have for all that you've done for us, and your dedication to the city and the community, and I wish you well. It's offering you an opportunity that we could not offer you here, and I think we'll all feel good for you, and we'd like to get the budget done before Becky leaves, that would be helpful. So, Mr. Tobin, you have the floor?
Well, thank you, I appreciate that. It was a good opportunity, these don't come up every day, and it was one of those, I knew if I didn't take it, I might regret it down the road. Hard to leave, but I think it's, I think it's good for me. Still hasn't really set in that four weeks from today, I'll be sitting in a different office with a different coworkers, with different, in a different community, so I'm excited about it, but I also, this is my home, and I want to make sure everything is smooth. I'll help any way I can, like I said, even after I leave, we've talked about, you know, the possibility of me still coming back and making sure things are running smoothly, deadlines are met, the audit starts, which is a, you know, a tremendous undertaking when there's not anybody here to help the auditors, so we had a big meeting this morning with the auditors to discuss how that would work going forward, so. So my goal obviously is to make sure things continue to run smoothly, and, yeah, I'm sad to leave, but I also am one of those people too, that, you know, I'd like to leave things better than how I found them, and I think things, we are in a much better fiscal place than we were seven years ago, so I'm excited about that, so, thank you very much. On that note, going forward, a few things to talk about. As you've probably heard, they have rolled out the third round of the stimulus package, which also entails what the local governments and the states should be receiving. These numbers can change. Right now, the anticipated amount that the city of Belvidere will get is a little over $3.1 million as part of the stimulus. We don't know exactly how that will look yet or when. I've heard anywhere from over the next 12 to 15 to 18 months that will roll out. I'm not sure yet if it'll be in a forms of grants, if it'll be infrastructure projects similar to Rebuild Illinois, which is helping us with Logan Avenue, so it's too early to tell exactly, but that number is what we are being told is, is about what we're going to receive, so that's a, that's, that's a, that's a big number. So hopefully, you're able to do some good things with that, and hopefully some infrastructure projects as well. We have received $350,000 of the Cures economic support money, this is the grants that went out to the businesses. We've already received $350,000 of that reimbursement from the state. There's still $15,000 remaining, but I will be requesting that reimbursement for the end of this month when I do my report, so hopefully we'll have that by next month. Today in the mail, we received check number three of Rebuild Illinois, which is our Logan Avenue project, so to date, we have received $843,076.08 of that funding. So we continue to get those, about every three to four months, we've been receiving a check. Also, General Mills Park, we have applied for another grant through General Mills to help do some, some other projects out at the park. That application was due this week, so if we are approved, that'll come back to you for approval of that grant, along with what the intent is to use the money for. We met with Public Works and the Y and the police department and discussed some options for the grant. We're looking at adding a junior-sized basketball court, as well as soccer goals. So they have the soccer field out there, but there's no goals, so the intent was to... Basketball seems to be something the kids continue to ask about out there. Basketball seems to be something the kids continue to ask about out there and, and the ability to have soccer games with the goals. So we'll see how that grant goes. We applied for twenty-five thousand. Um, let's see, other than, is there any questions on any of that? Next, uh, your normal month reports that I provide to you with the sales tax and the Home Row sales tax. Our numbers continue to look, um, pretty, pretty good. Um, we're not off by much in compared to budget as far as sales tax goes. And Home Row sales tax, you'll notice the local use tax was up extremely high. That's the highest number we've seen at a hundred and fifty-two thousand, two hundred and three. That would have been from December, so that would have been your, um, that would have been all the Christmas shopping, the online shopping, the shopping out of state. Um, that's all of those revenues that you're seeing. So that would be why it is so high, and obviously because of COVID, it's higher than normal. Don't go on, if you have any other questions, I'd be happy to ask or answer them. I guess to continue to see the local motor fuel tax is still much lower than, than it has been in the past. People still not driving as much. You'll notice the video gaming, uh, the machines were turned on halfway through January, so we're starting to see that revenue again as well. If there's no questions, that's all I have on that.
Hey Becky. Can you talk a little bit about the transportation tax? Because it's, um, it's new to just this, um, fiscal year twenty-one.
So in the past, we only received the, the regular motor fuel tax. And then it went into law, what was that, um, June of twenty nineteen, Brent? I think it was Ju-, or July? It was July, July of twenty nineteen. Um, when Governor Pritzker, um, put the new motor fuel tax in place where it was an additional thirty cents, there's a percentage of that that now comes back to the city, and that's called the transportation tax. So when we receive, um, the revenue from the state each month, it's broken out into two pieces, and that's why I break it out for you here, so you can see what the, what the regular motor fuel tax amount is. And then also what the additional portion becau- from that thirty, extra thirty cents that you're paying at the pump is coming back to the city. So that we are receiving some revenues back at the local level from that tax.
And can we, what can we spend that on, or is it just like the MFT?
It's just like the MFT, Brent, did you wanna go in to that?
Yeah, it's basically for road and infrastructure improvements, same as your, your regular MFT funds.
So that does allow, as you've noticed, the last, this last year, Brent has increased the amount of, of road projects, of overlay projects that he's doing, and a lot of it's because of that extra revenue from the transportation tax. Moving on, uh, you're, uh, not to do the job for the mayor, but it's still, still my turn, so I was just gonna bring up the budget. Um, if there was any questions, um, any changes, any recommendations that, that anybody wanted to talk about, this is a good time to do it. Like I said, with our, with there being a fifth Monday and this not coming back until, um, the first Monday in April, you know, the more we can get done ahead of time, especially with me leaving, the better. I would really love for our budget to get approved and not have, not have changes on that Monday so that I can start printing budget books, putting the budget books together, do all that. I have, um, reports that have to be published that are supposed to be on our website by, um, by May first. Um, so just, anything would help.
Alvin Flory, you have the floor.
Uh, please, uh, help remind me, we talked about, you had put some information in our packet about, when we talked about the budget, about possible long-term, interim, um, that would be, you know, it would be a cost to us, but it would be a significantly lower cost than having a full-time employee. Uh, was that included in our budget proposal, or is that something for the future?
That is in there, yes. It's an expense for a, uh, part-time, twenty-hour-per-week, um, Masters in Public Administration student. They're required to do internships, most of them will do them the full two years that they're in the program, um, at the same municipality. So ideally, we get a, an MPA student that can be here consistently, twenty hours a week for two years, who's, who's, what they wanna do with their life is in local government administration. So it'd be very helpful, not just to finance, but to all the other departments as well.
Thank you. Alvin Porter.
I'm just curious, what our treasurer does. Why can't they be involved in, like, helping with the audit and that type of thing? Is there some rule against that, or is it just because they're only here for four years?
The treasurer in their current role just really hasn't had much to do with the day-to-day operation of, of the finance department. They come, um, they come in every day, they're, they're an extra body and an extra set of hands. And because our staff is so small and we need, for auditing purposes, separation of duties, I can't, I shouldn't be signing off on things and going to the bank. Certain other people in the office shouldn't be issuing checks and reconciling. So the treasurer plays an important role by, they come to our office every day, they go to the bank for us, they bring the receipts back, so they're, they're helping us separate out the duties of, of the office. They also come into the office and look at the bills every month. And so there's an extra set of eyes, somebody else besides staff, besides the alderman that's physically, he sits there for a few hours and goes through everything, single bill. If there's questions, he'll ask me or the city clerk or the assistant city clerk, any of those questions. So those are really the duties that the treasurer has been performing. And I think it's also based on their salary. I mean, it's a very small salary, it's just over five thousand dollars a year, so, um, and based on the time constraints there, that's really the limit that the treasurer's been doing.
And Corey's been doing a real good job for us, but it is, it's part-time, uh, position with somebody who has not been trained specifically in financial, so, um, it, it does help. Yes, Alvin Frank.
Um, Becky, I just had a question about, um, the bills payable for the ADP. How much do we pay them annually?
So annually ADP is about, I gotta look what I budgeted, about seventeen thousand, five hundred. Is what we're paying, so that covers, um, that covers payroll. They handle our end-of-the-year reports, they handle our W twos, they handle, um, our ACA reports that have their, or reports that have to go out. Um, they handle sending, um, taxes to the state, um, all that type of stuff. No, they don't do that, but the, the payroll taxes. They take care of the payroll taxes for us, so they, they do quite a bit.
So when you, um, when we went to this ADP, it was a couple of years ago, I think we went to the software ADP, did you ever check, uh, paychecks to see if they were comparable?
We looked at a few different programs. Um, we, internally, we selected two to have them come and do, um, give us demos and tutorials. Um, also, I had talked to the county about the new one that they had gone to and got some feedback from them. So we really did our homework, we looked at some prices, some were way more expensive than, than we could afford or that we needed. Um, so, so ADP kinda fit that, um, fit that price point, um, and in our needs at the time.
Thank you, I just, I guess I didn't understand the, why it was so high, but you explained a little bit.
They, they do a lot for us, and also, um, taking it web-based has been huge. Um, if you recall, when we had, um, the cyber attack last February, had we not switched from in-code, in-house to ADP, nobody would have got paid. We probably would have had at least one, if not two, paychecks, and it would have been a disaster. Um, not only that, but then with COVID, um, it's really helped us be able to do things out of the office when needed. We've had payroll people have to be home, um, whether it was quarantining or whatever, that payroll still functions, payroll. And not only that too, but because of the new software, we cross-trained tremendously. So if one person's out, we have three people that now know how to do payroll. And that was not the case before, the case, before it was one person. So if anything happened to that person, we were in trouble. So now we are thoroughly cross-trained and we will continue to do that.
But from a record-keeping perspective and the preparation of documentation for all employees at the end of the year, that's, uh, very helpful in terms of them preparing those W two forms.
Correct, yeah. If anybody wants me to pull up anything, I have the laptop open, I can, I can pull up anything anybody wants to see.
Oh, yes, Alvin Porter.
Well, I'm gonna bring up a subject here that I know is a sore subject, and it's, it's always a really hard one to talk about, but I think we probably should discuss it this year based on, you know, events of the world as far as COVID and all that stuff. It's Exhibit B, the salaries for the employees for twenty twenty-two. Uh, it looks like they're looking for three percent increases this year, and in the past, it's, I've been told it's been two to two and a half, uh, percent. So I'm just bringing this up for discussion, uh, just wondering, you know, during these current times, I know, know that everybody deserves a cost of living increase, and, and most legitimate companies give their employees cost of living increases. Uh, but, you know, I'm looking at, there's a local church in my neighborhood that's giving out food, and lines every time they give out food is like three, four blocks plus long, you know, for giving out food right now because of the times. And I'm just wondering if three percent is appropriate for this amount of time, or if maybe we should talk about maybe sticking with the normal raises, or, I don't know, I'm just throwing it out for discussion.
I think we've talked about this three, four times, but I'll go through it again. We, when we negotiate with our five unions, used to be we, one union would have a two-year contract, one would have a three-year contract, and so in the interim, one, they'd use their contract, uh, what we talk about whip sauce into the next contract. Um, we have a group of dedicated employees here that are not unionized. And so when we do the contracts now, we propose a four-year contract, we propose rate raises based on the financial picture, and we give the same raises to the unions, and then we gave those same raises, those rate raises to our non-union people, a couple of reasons. Um, first of all, we don't pay commensurate salaries here for the people that work at the city to other cities, particularly cities our size. Um, we have a very small group, our auditors tell us we have about half the number of people that we need. Um, prior to my, uh, becoming the mayor, the mayor had a, had a secretary. Uh, Attorney Drella had someone that could help him sometimes with his work. So we're running with, with less people. And as I said, we don't have commensurate salaries to other cities our size. It has never been a problem to meet payroll because of the financial management of the city, and it certainly would not be a problem this year. What happens when you differentiate between union contracts, which you cannot break a union contract, or you end up in court, which ends up costing you tens of thousands of dollars in attorney's fees? You don't end up in court if you don't give your other employees a raise, but what you end up with is people thinking about unionizing. Okay? And, you know, I, I think that our, uh, this request, it was two, two and a quarter, two and a half, was it? And then three this year at the end of the year. If we were in a situation where because of COVID, we did not have the money, uh, to make these, these raises, um, I, I would say, let's look at doing something else. Let's see if we can get everybody together about doing it, but we're, we're not in any financial difficulty whatsoever. If you don't mind if I, we have eleven million dollars in a general fund at the end of this year. And that's from being prudent, and that's from the fact that we got the two, we'll get the two-point-six-million-dollar grant for Logan Avenue that we had planned on spending to start Logan Avenue next year. It's a million dollars that we got for, to help us with salaries of our first responders. And we don't know when this three-point-one, that doesn't even include the three-point-one, so that would be fourteen million dollars. Uh, at eleven million dollars, we have about seven months plus of a reserve fund. And we have not seen a significant decline in any of our revenues. So I think it sends a bad message, um, when we say because of COVID, we're not gonna give somebody a cost of living increase. Um, if it were not affordable and if we felt that, that our employees were not, um, performing at a very high level, that would be a different discussion. But I think everybody knows that our employees in this city administration work at a very high level. We have a one person in Gina in our planning department. We have, we're, we should have three people in the finance department. Um, the city attorney and I do not have an assistant or someone to help us. Um, and thank goodness that we have Abby, and before Abby, it was Sarah who helped us with our scheduling. Um, I, I don't know, I think it's too easy to say, well, let's not give any raises, but there was no problem. We have plenty of revenue to be able to meet what our obligations or promises were when we made the, the contracts with the unions. So that's, that's the reason that, that we feel that this is appropriate. Go ahead.
Okay, yeah, don't get the wrong idea, I'm not saying not give raises. And again, I'm all for, uh, any legitimate company giving their, everybody deserves a, uh, cost of living raise, 'cause we all know that cost of living goes up every year, so. I was just wondering how maybe it looks to the general public when you see something like that.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, as a, as a bit of history, and I'll actually be going through this again this coming, uh, fall and next, early next year, 'cause the union contracts all expire, uh, next year. But one of the reasons the, uh, corporate authorities, when they approved the collective bargaining agreements for, or almost four years ago, agreed a three percent increase for May of twenty twenty-one was that this last January, all employees had their insurance premiums increase. Uh, instead of contributing, uh, twelve percent of the premium rate, all employees now pay fourteen percent of the premium rate. So everybody's insurance went up. And that's one of the reasons why the corporate authorities approved that three percent increase four years, almost four years ago for the union employees. Um, as the mayor said, that increase applies to the non-unions as well, because historically, at least under the current administration, uh, the attempt has been to try, to try and treat the non-union the same as the union employees. Obviously, because they're non-union employees, it's up to this council what it wishes to do, and it can do, uh, as it sees fit with respect to wages, but that's the history behind it.
So there's another, they're paying two percent more for their health insurance than, than they were previously.
So, and I have that spreadsheet up right now, if anybody wants to, just so you can see the, the additional above the twelve percent that is now coming out of their paycheck, uh, beginning, this started in January. For family insurance, which is the majority of people, um, it's an extra six hundred and twenty-two dollars and fifty-six cents annually that's coming out of their paycheck now than would have been under the twelve percent.
Yes, Alvin Frank.
I agree with what, um, Tom Porter's trying to say. I think what he's trying to say is that a lot of people in town don't have the luxury that we do at city council. All the money that we get in our budget is from the taxpayer, and not all taxpayers are doing well at this point. So I, I say two percent, and that's all I'm gonna say.
Okay. Is that a motion?
Yeah, I'll make that a motion, that, it'd be two percent.
Across the board, for all city employees? Non-union city employees?
Yes.
And who's gonna second that? Okay, I have no second, so we'll move on. Anybody else has a particular item on the budget that's of great concern to them?
I'm, I'm sorry, what happened there, was she looking for a second?
She was.
I'll second that.
Okay, now I have a second. A motion and a second to reduce the three percent raise for city employees, non-union employees, from three percent to two percent. Additional questions or comments concerning the motion now on the floor? Hearing none, all those in favor of approval of lowering the... Hearing none, all those in favor of approval of lowering the raise for the city employees from 3% to 2%. Yes, Tom.
Can I, can I make an amendment at this time to that amount?
You can propose an amendment, certainly.
Okay, I, I would like to propose 2.5% if that's okay. Since that's what it was, I believe, last year, I would suggest maybe that would be appropriate.
Mr. Mayor, would it be cleaner to dispense with the motion on the floor and then have Mr. Porter make his own motion after that? I, I don't know. I, I guess you could do it as a motion to amend. I just, sometimes we get back and forth in these things. He's made a motion to amend, so I suppose if there's a second, we go forward.
I have a second for the motion to amend from 2% to 2.5% for non-union city employees. I have no second. Do I have a second?
I was going to second that.
Okay, I have a second by Alderman Stevens. So, I need a motion to amend the previous motion from 2% to 2.5% for non-union employee raises for the coming fiscal year. All those in favor of the amendment to the motion will, when their name is called, signify by saying aye. Those opposed, nay.
Brereton?
No.
Flurry?
Nay.
Frank?
No.
Freeman?
No.
McGee?
No.
Porter?
Aye.
Bradcliff?
No.
Snow?
No.
Stevens?
Aye.
Arivolo?
Nay.
Two in favor?
So, the amendment of 2.5% to the previous motion of a 2% instead of 3% increase for the city employees has been defeated, which brings us back to the motion of a 2% increase for non-union city employees for the upcoming fiscal year. I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion concerning that motion? Hearing none, all those in favor of reducing the proposed 3% raise for non-union city employees from 3% to 2% will, when your name is called, signify by saying aye. Those opposed, nay.
Flurry?
Nay.
Frank?
Aye.
Freeman?
Aye.
McGee?
Aye.
Porter?
Aye.
Bradcliff?
No.
Snow?
No.
Stevens?
Yes.
Arivolo?
Nay.
Brereton? Six in favor?
Motion is approved, a six to four vote to reduce the proposed 3% increase for non-union city employees to 2% for the upcoming year, even in reflection of the fact that their insurance costs are going up 2%. Thank you. Any other items on the proposed budget that people would like to address this evening? Good night. Thanks for coming.
Mr. Mayor, if there is nothing else, this will actually be appearing in two weeks on the agenda for second reading. So, Ms. Tobin can prepare the documents with the proposed amendment, and then we'll make that change in the actual document on that Monday night.
And may this be brought up for discussion again at that time?
You'll have to make a motion to amend and amend it and go through the process.
Could we please calculate what the total cost of the city would be and the difference,
Sure, we can do that. I mean, you can see right here, it's about, the 3% is about $40,000. But yes, we can calculate the, the difference.
And weigh that in relationship to an $11 million general fund balance. Yes, Alderman Snow.
So, at this point, once that money comes off, we'll just say roughly $12,000 or whatever, that's just going to go into the new savings or reserves that we will not have spent out of the budget.
Correct. It'll just be a balance.
Thank you.
Okay, if we have no other discussion tonight for the budget discussion, I guess we just move on. So, thank you, ladies and gentlemen. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make the motion to adjourn.
Motion by Stevens, may I have a second, please? Second by Snow. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. We are now adjourned.